Oh. If this, I want to follow me with all the commission orders and please. My apologies.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the European Republic of which stands one nation under God in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item, the agenda is a public comment and what we usually do is take comment from the room. And then anyone on Zoom. If there is public comment, then I'll explain the rules. If there isn't, I will not. Um, is there any in the, anybody in the room that wants to make public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make public comment? Please raise your hand. Can you see anybody, Matt?
Uh, no. Doesn't appear to be any.
All right, moving on, we'll get to number three, consideration and adoption of agenda.
Oh, and um, the emergency management report's been rescheduled for May twenty first.
Okay. Do I move for approval of the agenda removing item four B? Uh, I second that.
Move the second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Okay, then we'll get into our department reports and first up is assessment tax quarterly report. Mike, that's you.
Uh, anybody have any questions? No, I don't think so.
You're getting done, not supposed to be getting done, right?
But you're best.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Next up, we'll do the public works monthly report, Eric.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. During April, that flew right by.
Yeah.
Um, so you know, most of the time spent in April was finishing up our, our gravel road blading program. Hauling lots of rock out to gravel roads. Um, we pretty much wrapped that up. Uh, with the exception of a few of the mountain roads, you know, that, that, uh, that route usually lasts a little bit longer because we usually can't get up there till a little bit later. Um, other than that, we're pretty well caught up. Um, as I've been reporting, um, when time allows, we're going around the county fixing signs. Um, they're looking good out there. And, uh, Culvert and Cattle Guard repairs and replacements. Um, our big project Liberty School on, on the grade, um, the, with the grading all wrapping up and things drying out. We're back to focusing most of our efforts up there on Liberty School. Um, finishing up sloping some banks and getting some width and now just compaction and sub base materials. And getting ready, uh, for paving, which, uh, should happen this month. Hopefully I'll be reporting at the end of the month that it's done. So, um, that's been going well. As with as wet as it has been, I was getting a little concerned, but it's dried out quickly and we're making really good headway. Um, nothing significant at the, the airport, um. Planes are coming in and out. We are, I guess I could report that, um, we're talking to, uh, or Rose is talking to a, uh, uh, a club that wants to come in and, and do a launch, um, sometime this summer. So we'll be discussing that. And make sure that we, we get the word out for that. On the weeds, uh, Corey's, you know, he's, he's done, uh, with the, with the paved road system, has moved on to the gravel road system. All the bleeding, um, complete. He's got a lot of work out ahead of him. I'm working really hard on that. Solid waste. Uh, we've had quite an increase in loads coming in, um, from the, uh, the people in rural county. Um, we kind of see this uptick every year. It, it seems like we're, um, this year in particular though, uh, it seems like we're filling up early on Sunday. Um, there's been a lot of closing at noon. Uh, when, when that happens, we, we get the word out on, on, um, our Facebook page and the website. And there's a group up at, uh, Blake Ranch. They have a Blake Ranch roundup, uh, communication that, that I get the, the word out that way. Um, and so we're working, uh, hard to try and keep those open as long as we can.
Do you anticipate at some point we may need to increase the size of the transfer station? Or does this seem like sort of a one-off increase or has this been something that's a trend?
It seems to be steadily increasing.
Okay.
I think Matt and I have been discussing about, you know, the short range plan of maybe, you know, uh, adding some hours, maybe getting a, a full-time FTE and just discussing how that might look. It takes a long time, so we're discussing that, but yes. I'm seeing an issue at, at the north end and the south end. That we probably need to increase, um, our capacities.
I know it's something that throughout the county, I know that, that cities talk about wanting to keep things clean. And so it'd be really awesome if we could say, yeah, you know, we don't want to get to a point where like, well, we'd love for you to have your clean stuff, but we ran out of space. So good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just cities, you know, throughout the county too. You probably noticed that since we've had the transfer station and especially keeping it a low cost. People aren't driving out on a back county road dumping their garbage in somebody's ditch. Um, you know, I think the intent when they formed the transfer stations and were using TV monies to subsidize those to keep it, to encourage people, keep it cheap. So encourage people to, um, you know, all of theirs instead of spreading it on private property.
That's great, yeah. Yes, and I, I, yeah, it is something that we need to continue to talk about and, uh, increase, increase our capacities for sure. Um, it's frustrating when, you know, people are expecting that it's open and they, they show up and it, and it's closed. Um, not everybody's checking the website before they come down. We're encouraging that, call ahead. Some people are, and that's helpful. Sometimes they show up at my house. They want to know why it's closed, which is okay too. Where do I put this load? Yeah, that happened this Sunday. I had some visitors, so. Um, yeah, it'd be, yeah, good to respond to the need for sure. Um, are there any additional questions? That's the end of my report. Further questions on roads or?
No, um, I will want to get with you sometime in the act. They, um, had some stuff that went over with you sometime, so.
I look forward to getting back to those meetings. They're really important and I missed quite a bit. I actually do have something I wanted to add. I didn't get in the report, um, that you'll hear me talk about later. There's a lot of growth in the trees around, around the county that we are going to have to start dealing with. That stuff's some pretty costly. I've, uh, went on a tour with our mowing and brushing contract, dealing with the stuff against the road. And you know, me being a road guy, I'm always looking down. He's looking up and it's like we, you've got some issues out here that probably need to, to start taking care of. And the more I looked and the more I drove, I'm seeing it too, dead trees, limbs hanging over a right of way. I'm seeing limbs that are getting hit probably by RVs. And I'll, I'll bring that back. Um, I'll work on our contract and we'll start dealing with that stuff. And there's some trees that need removed completely. I'll be bringing that back too. But I've seen a boardman here again and some around the county at large as well, so. I'll bring that back.
Just for the commissions, um, do you need to have them designate approval for each of those? Are you just looking at a contract approval for, uh, to go out and do it on your disdirection?
I'll be looking for a contract approval to deal with trees in the county right away. Um, and I'll probably be bringing, I should have brought it already, but there is an issue on a county road that we don't maintain. That there, uh, but it is a county road and trees in the right of way that we probably need to address. I'll deal with that one separate. That's kind of a separate issue. But the contract will be completely clear that I'm addressing trees in the county right of way of roads that we maintain. I do have one issue separate, I'll bring. So, if that's clear enough.
I think that's good enough, yeah.
Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, that's up for you.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Morning. I'm dynamite. Sorry for my almost tardiness.
You were just on time.
I got stuck behind a few, uh, rigs going slower than anticipated all the way down, so. Though. Um, second quarter, I mean, third quarter compared to second quarter, obviously. We see some good numbers. Uh, when you're looking at the report, I'm going to start by chatting about the, uh, the charts on the left-hand side. So third quarter, uh, for demand response, uh, did go down slightly, went down, uh, to three hundred seventy-one rides. This is the door-to-door service, you know, the column schedule. Uh, we knew we were going to lose a little bit in that because we were putting so much resource into the fixed route side. Um, so that, that's, and so that reduced our cost even though we're seeing reduced rights, which helps us get more of the fixed route ridership. Um, on the fixed route ridership, we went from forty in the second quarter to two hundred fifty-two rides. Uh, this last quarter, that's strictly from going out, talking about it, doing the South County senior matters. Uh, going out to the city council meetings, uh, you know, just sharing with our community, our resources. Uh, but for, for total ridership, we saw an increase of about a hundred and fifteen, which is a twenty-three percent increase of, from quarter to quarter. The important part about these numbers is that change from the demand response to the fixed route because there's significant cost difference, uh, from going from, you know, essentially a door-to-door, one-person ride to having a bus come that can take multiple people on it at the same time. Um, so as expected, right, we saw the increase in fixed route, the de- decrease in general, uh, demand. Uh, so that's more ridership at less cost, which is really what we're planning for as we kind of move to losing some of these funds at the end of June, right? This was all built knowing that that was coming. Um, from a regulatory standpoint, we're working on getting some of our, uh, stiff reimbursements coming back in. So we pay the money, they reimburse us. Uh, Kevin's been and his team have been tremendous in helping us kind of rightsize some processes. Uh, prior to me getting here, it seemed like they were kind of from our end and not finance end, like recreated every time where there wasn't necessarily a process. And so they're now taking a step back, allowing us to kind of explain what we need and then helping us build the mechanisms to where in the future it'll be more of a push a button. We get what we need to reimburse versus trying to go through receipts and digging all these places that we used to do. So we're trying to really streamline that process to make it much more efficient and effective in getting the money back that we were asking to get back. Um, community outreach, we did a ton of community outreach during the last quarter. Um, I don't know if it's necessary to kind of say them all, but, um, you know, that's really, you know, what we tried to do without real marketing campaign, which we don't necessarily need is let people know, be there when we say we're going to be there and let it kind of organically grow, right? Once people start trying it and they realize it works and we're there when we say we're there, then they'll start sharing this as an option for other people. Um, we did see the twenty-three percent increase. We did launch our new fixed routes, which were technically launched the last day of this quarter. So most of the, what we're seeing in growth for those will be the next report. I will highlight some of them at the end of the report just because they're exciting to me and my transit nerdness. Um, um, we moved to Boardman, which has been great. We've had some community members come in and ask questions because we're in a more visible location. Uh, we had the opportunity to see our drivers every day, uh, which is great, right? Because they can come in now, ask questions, be supported. Uh, we introduced a radio system to our drivers, so now they're not required to get on their cell phones and fall over to communicate with dispatch. It's not like a CCOM radio. It's more of a one-way push to talk. But at least now from a public transit standpoint, that's not any illegal use of your hands. You're allowed to use a radio system while operating a vehicle in public transit. So, uh, that's been a benefit to the drivers. Um, and just because some of the success stories that we saw, it's just since we've still kind of done some of these changes. Um, right, uh, when, when we started these new routes, um, I really thought we would see a lot of the growth on the north side of the county, right? A little more dense population moving maybe from here again and Boardman. Um, but aside from these quarterly numbers, right, we had the two hundred and fifty-two rides last quarter. And the first month of the new routes, which was, uh, this month in April, the first thirty days, we had two hundred and ninety rides just in the first month. So there's a need for this, right? People are seeing it and that's not just from the north side. The two routes that come down here, the Rojo and Marado between the two that are going multi-directional. Uh, one of them caught eighty rides and another one of them caught sixty rides approximately in that first month. So every day we have people from Hepner that are going either to Good Shepherd or Walmart on those routes. Uh, some of them are senior citizens. Uh, we've, we have a individual from Willow Creek Terrace that goes to the hospital every day on the fixed route bus. Where before he was, we were bringing a van from north, spending forty-five minutes to drive him four minutes to then sit there for the hour while he was doing, you know, visiting his family to drive him back four minutes and then spend forty-five minutes of empty drive to get back home. Uh, so we're really seeing where this reach out to the community and kind of sharing this narrative is working. Uh, obviously, I, you know, it's a big number coming from forty rides, right? In the second quarter to this first month, that's a six hundred and sixty-two, that's six hundred and sixty-two percent increase in ridership.
So you expect that to continue, right? At every, every month?
I honest, I honestly believe that the need for this county, because these numbers, like we, I can physically see who's up, not physically, but by communicating with the drivers, right? I kind of know who's utilizing the bus. Um, I think we could easily have a thousand rides per quarter on the fixed route, not at the end of this quarter, but I think once, um, the schools catch on a little bit more, I think when the summer programs, people realize that this is safe, that there's camera, right? It takes a mom to tell a mom sometimes. Uh, we do have a, a ten-year-old that rides the bus every day to school in, uh, Boardman. Because he doesn't want to ride the school bus because he takes an instrument. And so this is much easier for him to just walk out his door to that stop, would not be crowded with all the other students. Right? So, uh, we've started a, a, it's called this, a summer of independent social media campaign. If you follow us on Facebook where we're actively showing families and youth where they can go on the bus and how to do it. So it's like a specific catch the bus here. You can go to the Board of Rec Center at these times, or you can go to the Hepner Aquatics, you know, exercise park. We haven't done that one yet because it's not open, but it's on the list of ones that we will do. Um, I'm going to leave some other just generic flyers with you if you're interested. Um, we're also working with our partners, uh, so Laurel County Veterans, who've made a multiple, uh, talk about veteran services and our service is together. We're sticking this on all of our buses. They have one, we've created a, a card that talks about both of our services. The Boardman Parks and Rec, uh, RV Park, uh, asked us to create a flyer that they've given to every person that camps in their campground. So it essentially says, don't unhook your vehicle to run to the grocery store. The bus comes to the park. Uh, they posted signs in the park where our bus stops are at to try to promote the ridership. Um, uh, Pioneer Memorial here put a stop-up for us outside of their facility. So if you go up there, there, we have the designated stop now at their location. That's posted, so people will know. Uh, when I leave the meeting today, the Parks and Recs here at Hepner said I could put stops, I mean, bus stop signs on the, uh, their, uh, pool signs. So we'll see. So we're starting to see traction and when people can see where the bus is at, that also helps that growth. So, um, I'm excited that kind of some of this hard work is paying off. I'm really excited that, um, um, that there's growth opportunities to have. And you know, just one of the, the, the things that we have on the table that isn't on this report is we're, we're working with the Irgan, uh, Parks and Recs for their summer program. We haven't finalized anything yet. Uh, but we reached out and told them kind of what we could do and how we can support them. And they identified last year that they spent nearly twenty thousand dollars in transportation for summer programs. And if we can work with them and show like how our schedule can get them to some of the places that they were going anyways, or if they modify maybe the times they were going to those places. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity for them to just get on our bus and capture that ridership and save that money for other programs. So, and that's really what we're trying to do is really show people, right, that this service isn't can be for anything, right? Especially if you have the opportunity to make adjustments in your schedules. Uh, any questions?
Some comments. Sounds like you're really building a good program here. So get very positive and forward.
I appreciate it. I'm trying. I, I know, uh, I know, uh, uh, some of you heard this before, but I think, you know, providing the right opportunity for Laurel County and transit right now, as we're kind of growing through this growth, uh, transition in our county is, is essential, uh, to get it ingrained in people's culture. So as, as we grow, as people move in, they understand that it's there as a resource. Um, you know, we've, uh, I know Bishop Peterson's service before for sure, but, uh, Try Mint importantly, put light rail in thirty years ago for like twenty-five million dollars, right? It is ingrained, you can ride the light rail everywhere. Seattle's doing it right now on the federal dollar to try to put it in for sixty-five billion dollars. Right? So if we, if we show the need and build this kind of infrastructure now as a community grows, right, if, if people just say, you know, oh, you don't need to get your kid a car, throw him on the bus, you know, if you don't need to do whatever, you know, the bus is going to come by and, and that's really what my goal is, right? And we're primed for that as a, as a community and as a county to really allow people access to transportation in different ways. So I appreciate your support, commissioners.
I do have one question.
Yes.
I had someone in Ione ask if, uh, if we could potentially have, uh, a van pick people up to bring them to the, the senior meals in Hepner.
Hmm.
Um, is that something?
Absolutely. They can schedule, the vans are still available and
Okay.
What we, uh, what we did is we couldn't take the fixed route vehicle through
Okay.
I own to make the times work.
Mm-hmm.
But the vans are still available through scheduling.
Awesome.
Hundred percent, if they're not full.
If they're not full.
Yeah, if you call the day before, you're probably getting a note, right?
Okay.
But if you know you're going, you know, every Tuesday, if you call a month in advance and say, I want to go.
Hmm. Well, I, there's a group that would, that would like it.
So absolutely.
Okay, awesome. All right, thank you. That was it and agree with your thoughts. Awesome.
Any other questions about Stephen?
No, just to echo what David says, you know, it's great to see some growth and up in ridership and it looks like you're doing a great job of moving the program forward since, kind of languished at a low level for a long time.
But it, it, it only happens because the community is willing to, to utilize it, right? I can do everything I want, but if they will get on the bus, right, then it doesn't matter. So I mean, that's the great part. We see a need, right? We've identified that there is a need and now we need to capture.
Well, it seems like though that, um, you went out and you found what it is that they're needing and of changing the routes and to meet the needs, so.
Cool.
That's great.
COVID identified that for us, right? Essential services, right? That's a B one E. So.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, question here, ask you, you can hit the button that shows, case we want to, there's a stand man along. Log to, is that possible? Who's telling me? I don't know. That, okay, you guys? You know, I mean, like, you know, Jaleen always turns in written report, but maybe somebody has a place, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up would be our, um, treasures month report. Jaleen, she just, I said, she misses. Yes, she has something. I won't see her all of that, so. And I think they have comments. Uh, county administrator report now.
Yes, um, submitted the written report, uh, for, for the file. Uh, we've had a lot of work, um, on the strategic plan. We had, uh, several of in town hall meetings. I hope to have a, um, consultant, Matt Dix, join us during business and just give an update on that. Um, as we've, as we've been working on, we've had a service plan advisory committee special meeting as well to address a few questions on contractual issues next Tuesday. Clean water consortium and nitrate water at work. Working on that, two things, uh, the public hearing, uh, for the Senate bill for Capitol West is May ninth at one o'clock. Be shooting you the Zoom links on that if you'd like. Uh, and it's going to be a short testimony, but I'll be driving it. But also to speak before this Senate committee national resources and wildfire issues. County was saying that, which is a nice gesture. Frankly, last year they had a committee meeting and they only talked to state department. And so they reached out, they asked counties, uh, they asked me, um, and I deferred to our she's this point, Steve. So she's planning to testify on that and Commissioner Dorn is going to be testifying from Yuma Tilla. So we're excited about that. And a lot of things going on that at the market consortium meeting next Tuesday as well, which is one reason why I wasn't going to be ready for that testimony because I have that clean water consortium meeting. Um, we're still working on courthouse design. We'll have a short update on that. As part of the strategic, um, plan, took the opportunity to have a leadership book club managers and department heads. Good discussion. The book is called Leadership and Self-Deception. I love the book. The title I'm not quite keen on, but it's, it, once you read it, it's very keen on that, uh, what it means, but we got seventeen directors and managers participating in that. And we hope to have future trainings that incorporate those same principles, which will include elected officials and including the commission if you'd like to. Uh, it was, uh, well received. We have, uh, did a little survey, a couple of comments. You know, I asked them for their, uh, for their views beforehand and they're like, ah, geez, another thing I gotta do. And yet most of the comments afterwards came out saying, this was good. This is not just providing us tools, but, uh, to fix things, but it was to kind of set mindsets of how to go about uh, resolving conflict and, and getting ourselves out of the box. Um, so we've been working on several things like that, uh, and, uh, forward. Um, any questions from the commission?
Just have a comment. Thanks for mentioning to you. I'm glad you took sale on for this and I, I think that networking, the contacts that you make down there, because you know, we're going to have a relationship on several things as we go forward as a county, so. I'm really happy that, uh, we're doing that. I, I think it's important, you know?
Yeah.
Face, face with people, business card extremely.
Yeah. My wife, my wife asked, you really need go-to? Can't you do it virtually? I'm like, no, we, we need to be there.
I agree with this.
So.
Yeah, I think it's really, I think it's good. So that's my tip. Anybody else have any questions on that or his report? Okay, thank you. Next up will be our consent agenda. Does anybody else have a?
I'm good with it as is. I move to approve of the consent agenda. Second.
Moving second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, this is motion carried. Okay, on our business side, first up would be our second post courthouse update.
Um, so this is just a, a small follow-up. Um, during our meeting on April sixteenth, our design team offered several options for value engineering to keep, I get our budget under thirty-five million dollars. Uh, one of the items we kind of kind of hemmed and hawed on was the, the justice court. Shell that out or just remove that from the area. As we're looking at it, uh, they had proceeded with kind of deciding to shell it out, um. But in my decarization, I'd like to ask the board, board of commissioners just to, just to pull most of that square footage out of the building. I'm speaking with, uh, Judge Dill. He's very comfortable in remaining in this work. Uh, courthouse as we go through this, um, the, the cost of the square footage over there is quite premium. And, uh, I mean, and I believe we can, we can have a good use of space, even if there is, if, if we were to, uh, coordinate that space in the, in the old courthouse with uh, coordinate that space in the in the old courthouse with some of the OC functions in that, uh, scheduling and prioritize among I mean, departments is a lot easier than what Judge deals have to deal with both county, state. So um, he's in support of that. Um, our design team just wanted, since this is a a change, uh, wanted, I wanted to make sure that the B O C was on on board with that. Um, I, we are looking to eliminate uh, two point five million dollars in spending, we're still looking at value engineering, so I I wanna see this as getting us under the thirty five million mark, but we're still trying to make sure this is as efficient and uh, that value added uh, portion of the project. We try to keep it as lean, but as um operational as we can. And so just asking for uh, consideration on that from the B O C. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to to respond on that.
I guess uh, our, our decision was that uh, as I, as I thought it was, was that hey, play it out, and if we need to take it out, then let's do that, um. Have have we already crossed that point where it's like, we can't, we can't do it? Is that is that how fast we've we've got to that point?
Well, um, just to, just give a little history if you don't find commission, uh, when we originally uh, were setting about to have it in uh, Hepner a year or so ago, we were actually, we weren't going to do a full uh, judges' chambers and that, it was going to be a hearing room with an office for the judge. When we went up to Boardman, it ballooned into a full justice system setup, and as we came back down, that remained. Um, while, while we're looking at that, we've got several contracts that have got finalized with the state that includes percentage ratio for payments and um, and I, you know, in my mindset, we can play around this for a while for the next two months and then pull it out, or we can go ahead and do it and get this process underway. Um, that's, that's kind of the direction I'm looking at. You know, as as the project goes on and on, it's just gonna be more and more that we have to redesign if we wait to pull it in. And so I'd rather just take care of it now and and move forward. Is kind of my uh, my stance on that.
Other questions? Motion to approve.
I'll move to approve removing the justice court space, new circuit courthouse project.
I second that.
Then moving second and further discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those. Thank you, uh, next up would be our strategic plan update, um. Uh, Dixon.
Mister Dixon was gonna try to join, he had another appointment, I was gonna take him to the little bit, but I can uh, carry this out. Um, just to let you know, on May first and May second, we had uh, the uh, stakeholder meetings and the town hall meetings. Uh, we found out that um, strategic plan town hall on Thursday night, when people still went on, it's not a great time for South County. We only had three participants at the town hall that evening, had a good participation in the morning with the stakeholders of uh, both in the north and south. Uh, there's a couple members that we didn't have, just because the court meetings and and press meetings that were that were conflict. Um, but and the uh, the the open town hall in Irrigan was was fairly well attended, is it, we're rather diverse view uh, from the residents, they received some good feedback, but one of the uh, one of the questions that the the pack had was, it might be helpful to have another set of town hall meetings um, a little bit later and not have it on Thursday or Friday, but have it on a, on a on, uh, earlier in the week. And so uh, they have requested that they, that we do that, they're shooting for uh, June eleventh and or tenth and eleventh, which would be a Wednesday or Tuesday, Wednesday combination. And then have the summary uh, meeting with the pack to to help go through some of this information. That pushes back our retreat, which we'd originally scheduled for June first and second, that will likely be held it's right after the fourth of July. Dream for for the commission to come in. Results. Um. We had that conditionally in for the contract. So if we'd like to proceed with that, we wanted to let you know the change of the schedule on that. Uh, doesn't push it out too far, uh, the report will still be available, the final report uh, in end of August, September timeframe for adoption. And we can continue to work on uh, capital improvement plans based on tying it into the uh, strategic plan and such going forward. This also allows us to keep the survey open a little bit longer. Um, one of the things we're looking to do is send out a flyer uh, from the county to all residents to allow them to have that with the QR code or just the uh, just the internet uh, address on that. And we're working on getting that out uh, the next week, it's sent out, so those are a couple of things we had. Uh, it's interesting, I didn't attend any of the meetings fully, I popped in towards the end or introduced them, um, and overall, I, uh, the general consensus was, um, we need a lot of healing, we need a lot of uh, emphasis on unity and a lot of feedback that they appreciated the county for taking these steps. And so I know um, the the ask was to have you not attend those. Uh, and some of you probably were chewing leather as those meetings were going on, and I appreciate your uh, patience and understanding, uh, and but overall, feedback was, this is great that we're getting better and talking these things, and so that was very appreciated that the 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 county and commissioners sanctioning these meetings, helping us to go along looking to modify the agenda, just to see if we can get one last push with a little bit of patience for the stakeholder, really good for patience, town hall, just like to try one more time to get a little bit more.
I think that's a good call, Wednesday in particular, um, there are relatively speaking, no, um, meetings scheduled on Wednesdays in the county.
Yeah.
Basically every other day of the week, but for some reason, Wednesdays are a no go. Um, so that's a good time because there aren't things scheduled, the second Tuesday, I would want to check. Um, what what were we thinking? Where would that town hall be?
Um, this, the town hall there on the town, they had the uh, the tenth, they were looking to have it in Boardman at five thirty P M, and the eleventh Wednesday would be here and have to. So the other one, we had Hepner's first and then Boardman's the second night, um. And um, so that's what they're proposing this time.
I think that, I think that works well, because that, that the tenth, I think is probably I own, Lexington both have city hall meetings that day, I think. So.
So. A little reminder.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Um, one thing we did is uh, I haven't seen results from the surveys yet, they had worked to a hundred responses, that's in the, that was in the first week. Um, so we give, we also give hard copies to all the senior uh, centers, and so we've got to go and reach some of those harder copies, bring those back, so.
Only call, call me, I guess, I took a bunch of them to the senior center and have you a response? Uh, and I, I think it might have some more of the people thought out there, but just a comment, I've heard prob- positive things about this, people saying, I'm glad you're doing this. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely push back and get more feedback, I think that's good.
Okay, so we are, our motion is to do we need that motion?
Um. For additional town hall meetings, um, just, just for acknowledgement from the B O C, that's okay, I would ask for that.
Okay. Uh, I move to approve additional town hall meetings and adjustment of uh, the planned schedule uh, for for the strategic plan.
For the strategic plan, thank you. Second.
Moving second for the discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, now. We got to see our sole source determination, you're sure it's satisfied. Sandy's online, right?
Yeah, I think so. We'll be able to determine this stuff, um. Brian Commissioners. Kevin, finance director. Um, so this is a you heard blocking out, blocking up here. Um, I'll, I'll let Brian talk to any specifics of the system, um, and changes, but the current uh, vehicle and body mounted camera platform that the sheriff's office uses, uh, contract service agreements expires at the end of this fiscal year. Um, and in looking to renew it, uh, they made the determination that they want to pursue uh, an alternate vendor, a different vendor. Um, and all the details associated with that, with that platform are in uh, included in the packet as well with the the service agreement and the uh, proposal. Um, we originally were going to pursue this under a cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell or NASCO, which would allow us to not have to go through the steps of doing a formal uh, RFP sealed bid process uh, and whatnot, because those agents, those organizations have already completed those for us. Um, however, uh, it sounds like the uh, county is able to obtain even more favorable terms than what's available under those cooperative agreements. Um, if we do an agreement outside of those and direct negotiate with the vendor, um, there's some unique functions and capabilities and and technology that this vendor uses that's proprietary and only available for this vendor. Um, and wanted to bring forward a recommendation for doing the sole source procurement um, based on those proprietary uh, functions that are, that are only available with this platform. Um, the vendor utility Inc., Utility Associates Inc., they provided a a letter, um, that's also attached, I believe that's uh, attachment number two, um, that provides all the details and and what differentiates their their platform from uh, others. And essentially, it's a, it's a one stop shop, one, one platform where they have the same level of functionality. Um, with any other vendor, you're gonna have to piece together multiple systems, multiple vendors, so. Um, with that, uh, if the board uh, comes to the conclusion uh, that we can make the sole source uh, determination, the next steps for this would be to post public notice, which should be posted on the website today. And there's a seven day protest period um, to allow anybody to protest the sole source determination. Um, the conclusion of which we'd be able to execute the contract, so we bring that back to the board of commissioners, because it's a uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar contract. Um, or if there's any protest to the sole source determination that's received, we would bring those back um, to the board for review discussion, determination at that point for what the next steps are. So that's what the the request and the recommendation is, so I'll let Brian add anything about the specifics of the system and entertaining questions.
So yeah, the the system and why we chose uh, utility Inc. because of what they're able to offer, um, and it's significantly less, I mean, it's a large contract, it's a five year contract, broke, it broke down into five payments. However, it's still significantly less than what we are currently paying, um, and for less. We're going, we're getting twice as much uh, equipment, uh, with with utility Inc., they're also going to come out and uh, do the initial install in every single one of our vehicles, um, along with the training, and then they will train, um, included in the price, they will train our outfitter, uh, whoever's going to outfit the vehicle at no extra cost as well to ensure that the quality of install uh, remains the same. The, the, I always mess up the word, but the the uh, the cameras capabilities supersedes what we have currently, um, they're not even in the same ballpark between the evidence collection, uh, between the reporting uh, portion of it, along with the tracking, um, GPS tracking, which is a huge uh, resource that we do not currently have. Uh, the, the uh, download also is time saving, so it's gonna save us time and money and ensure that our cameras are always out there, currently, right now, you have to take your body camera and take it into the station, put it on a docking station and hope that no emergency call comes in. And depending on how much video you have, it could take hours to download. Uh, currently, or with utility Inc., it's all done from our car in uh, through wifi. Um, there's no docking station, there's no, so we save costs there as well. Um, it, all it takes is internet, we have internet uh, in our vehicles to run our M D Ts. And if there is a case, which obviously happens in moral county, we're out in an area where we don't have wifi, it stores it on the device. So as soon as we come back into wifi, it automatically downloads uh, into the system. So the capabilities and resources that it provides is significantly better uh, than what we currently have. And so that's why we recommend that we go with utility.
Where does that data get stored?
iCloud.
Okay.
So yeah, just a question, not so much about the system, but more about the process, I like saving, not. I like to, you know.
Right.
You know, that's.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can you kind of walk me through the, just not extensive, but how we arrived at the spot where you made the determination that you could get this better deal, so that maybe in the future, uh, we look at other things we have, is, how how does that work? What 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 kicks off the process of those stories? Is this something you do all the time, or is it?
No.
Is it, is it from you, from the department that starts out or?
Well, uh, uh, this specifically, uh, uh, the sheriff actually gets credit. Um, he went to the Western State Conference and he was talking to one of the vendors, um, and found, and they gave him a good pitch that made him interested, and he knew the sheriff of, you know, knew that our contract with our current contract ends at the end of June, so we started, and a little bit of help from Kevin, um, just making sure we follow the right procurement policies and stuff, and so we just started looking into it and started conversation and letting them know what we were wanting and what we were looking for. And it it just kind of snowballed or started rolling from there, and then um, we, you know, we did get another bid from our current contract, and it was significantly higher with half of the equipment. Um, and that I, for us, that was a big deciding factor, it was half of the equipment, but still cost us more. And so uh, currently, we don't have in car cameras, uh, we just have body cameras and with this, with utility Inc., we're able to get body cameras for all the officers and in car cameras for all but the administration, uh, for less than what we're currently paying. And so that was our big push right there was a, save the money, but it was also the, we're doubling up on our equipment, it's uh, guaranteed. Uh, they also offer, so we're getting uh, a thirty body ca- or twenty eight body cameras, they're giving a, get shipping us two free ones. They saved it all in the, but they're shipping us two extra ones, that way when one goes down, we have one to hand out, we just ship it back to them, they fix it or replace it and ship it right back. Uh, and that, that's a big, that's a big plus when, you know, we need them and uh, for a lot, you know, for several different reasons, officer safety, evidentiary basis. Um, and so we're always having those cameras out in the field and we're not down any. And it doesn't cost us anything extra to, when something like that happens.
If I could, uh, chair. Um, so a little bit more broadly speaking, the the procurement statute um, allows for a sole source or direct award, um, in the case where um, the contract review board or the governing body, which should be the board of commissioners um, meets certain criteria, um, and those are the uh, so this would fall under under the other findings that support the conclusion that the goods and services are only available from one source. Um, and it's the uniqueness of of how they've developed their system under, under a single platform that creates that situation, it is very uncommon that a direct negotiation with the vendor is gonna yield fa- more favorable terms and pricing to the county than utilizing one of the, the, you know, whether it's an Oregon state contract, you're one of the cooperative uh, purchasing uh, programs that we're able to purchase through. Um, usually those give us the the best value, um, so this is this kind of an uncommon uh, circumstance where they said, well, you know, you can get it cheaper if you just don't do it under that contract and do it this way, so.
Yeah, no, that's. Yeah, no, that's why, that's why what prompted my question is. So it's like the, you know, you wanna get the best deal for the taxpayers. Uh, this looked like it was a little anomaly to the normal way to do that. It's just what replicated, if we save money, get a better deal. But uh, yeah, anyway. Okay, what we got here? Any, any questions? You got suggested motion there?
I, so the one thing I do have is on the sole source determination, the letter here, there's a small typo. And I can just give it to Valerie.
Okay.
So. Yes, I'll make the motion. I'll move to make the sole source determination for utility association aim for the provision of bodily vehicle camera. Communication systems, County Sheriff's Office, authorized staff to post notice of the sole source determination and begin the seven day posting period.
I second that.
Move the second, further discussion. All in favor?
Hi, hi. Hi.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks.
Well, the last time I sat up here two times, second time you guys told me no, so maybe. And that will be coming next week, so I mean next B O C. But um, so I haven't gone through this process before, so. Please share if this is different than it's done in the past. Uh, but we have a uh new. Yeah, individual uh take over from Boardman Parks and Rec would like to join our TAC. Um, the TAC itself is actively looking for recruits. Many people have been on there for many, many years, technically outside of some of the bylaws, but we haven't had a lot of interest, so we did want to. Disband people who have shown interest in staying engaged in the TAC. Uh, by allowing her to come on, she represents several of the key demographics that our TAC asks us to. To be uh conscious of. Uh, she's not replacing anybody, but this, this is the first steps to have people who maybe have. Are choosing to put in their time to an opportunity to leave. Uh, so we're just looking for approval to be able to add her to uh our transit advisory committee.
Okay, any questions, Stephen? Your appointment request?
So I'll move to appoint Tiaiko Biagist uh as a member of the transit advisory committee.
I second that.
Move the second and further discussion.
Hi, hi.
All opposed, motion carried.
Many gentlemen, keep sir.
Well, okay, next up is the out of state travel request, wastewater symposium study tour in Denmark. Matt, do you?
Yes, um, the county received an invitation uh specifically our planning director to attend the twenty twenty five wastewater symbiosis. Study tour in Denmark. Um, and that is in Denmark, uh in Europe. Um, this is a uh, a. A very impactful training that several members of the the port uh. Staff as well as the industries up there have partaken of it and in speaking with Debbie Rady, she says this is. Uh, crucial to understand some of the evolving technologies and processes that industrial wastewater treatment is going through. Uh, and directly ties into the uh the impacts of the uh nitrate uh in our groundwater in northern. More County. Uh, this was an unexpected invitation, uh was not anticipated or requested, but people reached out. And actually offered a scholarship to help cover the cost, uh half the cost of the uh of the conference. And so that would put uh the cost of uh the other half of the cost of the conference as well as uh. The airfare to get back and forth that uh to uh to Denmark. Um, because of the. The county, of course, we don't have processing of industrial uh wastewater, but we are a regulator. So we need to be, uh, have an understanding what's going on and the changes on this. And I do know that the port is looking at. All latest and greatest to try to alleviate some of the issues that they're dealing with. And so having uh the county staff. Be be have an understanding of what's going on, I believe is is an important factor to to consider. Uh, since this is uh qualifies as the out of state travel, we do need to have the board of commissioners approval on this. Uh, we do have forty seven hundred dollars left in the training uh. Line item for uh for the planning department, and so they can cover this with. You know, adjusting a little bit of training and taking a little bit of O and N as we go through this. Um, Cameron provided a a letter. Explanation on our own parts as well as links and. The, the agenda and whatnot for sort of the training. While this is unusual and would not be, uh, we don't anticipate setting a precedent to send people out like this. I do believe that there is. Valuable consideration would ask the board of commissioners to approve this out of state uh training. And allows to make plans to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about?
No questions, just comment of uh, I have, I've heard multiple people at the port talk about this specific. Uh, event and I think the the port is using this as a. You know, they're looking for models and ideas, and if we have somebody who's also familiar with that on a counting level, I think that would be of immense value, so I'm. Very excited to see it. I'd like to justify myself, but I had nothing to do with that regulation.
I, I had a similar thought. I saw Denmark and I was like. But so, and it's, they keep them busy and looking at those things, so it's not on a vacation.
Do you have any motion?
Uh, I move to approve out of state travel request for county planning director to attend the twenty twenty five wastewater symbiosis study tour in Denmark.
Do I hear more? Hold a second. Well, let me hear your second uh motion, uh, it dies of those seconds. So.
So we're not gonna support sending somebody in our county?
There is no discussion because there was no second. If there's a, in order to have a discussion about, you need to say.
Yeah.
That's why we always say further discussion, or some people will say, well, anyway. It requires, it requires a second to have a discussion. Okay, that concludes our business side. And the next up is our correspondence.
So I distributed this to uh commissioners before the meeting. Um. We received a request from the Men's Health Network in Washington, D C. Uh, June is Men's Health Month and Men's Health Week. Um, and they would like the county um to proclaim in June ninth through fifteenth as medicine.
Good, thank you. Uh, I move on now to commission reports.
Um, last week there was a NEACT meeting intended and then. Friday this week, it'll be a community renewal, community association meeting. It'll be in Warbin starting ten o'clock at the same center. You know, since most of them are virtual, but once a quarter, they meet in person and this time it's in Moro County. So obviously you're both invited to attend if you'd like. David's our alternate. So meeting usually runs from ten to one and then. Since it's in county, then we're gonna go down to the lodge, have lunch, and then they requested to. Do kind of a tour of what's going on in Moro County, so I'm just going to. See what it is that see and point out like the new law more substation that B P A just finished. And some of the other stuff down in the port area and again, see what else they can see. That's what I got.
Okay, I don't have anything to give us.
Uh, no, I do not.
Uh, we're gonna go into executive session next. You're my call five, five minute reset. Come back, we'll go to open session and call the executive session.
Shoot everybody.
Recording.
That's why I like to hear first. Okay, we're back from a break and we're back into open session. And now we are going to go into executive session. More County Board of Commissioners will now be in executive session. Pursuant to O R S one nine two dash six six zero two H. To consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of, representatives of the news media, designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are especially directed not to. Report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No, no decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And one doubt, uh. You know, there's, there is, will be a potential decision or action items as a result of the executive session. So with that, I'm calling all your commissioners to executive session. Yes, uh, we're now back in open session and there will be no action taken. So, um. Those. Last items, um. Okay, with that, any other business from the commission? Okay, we're gonna call this meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.